Is Jim here today?
Just me. Alright, it's two.
Yep.
So you can go.
Okay, the meeting will please come to order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of this board is final. Respect it does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, make any recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, pull the board, please.
Mr. Sappert?
Here.
Mr. Alessio?
Here.
Mr. McShane?
Here.
Mr. Rigs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Okay, first up is approval of the minutes of May 19th, 2002.
Motion to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If motion is second to approve, pull the board.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Sappert?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay, those are approved. Next thing on the agenda is citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Anyone speaking on the agenda item is entitled to speak for a maximum of four minutes. It is not a question and answer period, and staff in the zoning board of appeals does not generally respond to public comments. Please note that speakers who engage in conduct injurious to the harmony of the zoning board of appeals shall be called to order by the presiding officer and may forfeit the opportunity to speak. There's also an opportunity, all the cases on the agenda today are public hearing, so there's also an opportunity to speak when that actual agenda item is called. So you can choose to speak now or during the time when the agenda item is called. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an agenda item under this section? Okay, moving on is old business public hearing, under which we have nothing listed. So moving on to new business public hearing. I want to make a note that the first petition, which is petition 202232, which was a special use permit for an automotive maintenance facility located at 260 Alessio Drive, that agenda item was withdrawn by the petitioner. So next on the agenda is petition 202233, which is a series of variations on signage to allow an electronic message center for a church in a residential district located at 353 North Midland Avenue.
Petitioner present?
I'm gonna read this.
You wanna read it? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll read the staff report first. So the applicant is Karen Dodge of Municipal Solutions. The owner is Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church. Location again is 353 North Midland Avenue, and the request is a series of variations on signage to allow an electronic message center for a church in a residential district. The petitioner, who is a consultant for the property owner, requests variations to allow the modification of an existing monument sign located at 353 North Midland Avenue. The ZBA makes the final decision for these variance requests. Variance requests include: A variance to allow an illuminated ground sign for a church in a residential zoning district; A variance to increase the total sign area for all ground signs on the property; A variance to continue the non-conforming setback of the existing monument sign; And a variance to continue allowing more than one ground sign. The subject property in question is 1.7 acres in size. Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church has been located here since 1957. The property is zoned R1 Single Family Residential. The church's main entrance is on the west side of Buell Avenue at Midland Avenue. There is a secondary entrance off Glenwood Avenue. There is a five-foot-wide parkway and a five-foot-wide sidewalk running along Midland Avenue. So the monument sign, subject to the modification request, is located 17 feet from Midland Avenue. For surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and there are single-family residential homes. To the south, it's zoned R2 Single Family Residential, and that's Pershing Elementary School. To the east is R1 Single Family Residential and R4 Multi-Family Residential, and there is a single-family home there as well as a fraternal hall. And then to the west is R1 Single Family Residential, and there are single-family residential homes. Under applicable regulations is our sign code and then the requirements for granting a sign variation. Under discussion, in a residential zoning district, the zoning ordinance does not allow illuminated ground signs. Limits ground signs to one sign per property and limits total sign area for all ground signs to 12 square feet. The petitioner, acting on behalf of Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church, seeks to modify the existing monument sign that is located at the church's Buell Avenue entrance by replacing the changeable copy monument sign with a 15-square-foot electronic message center and adding a 15.08-square-foot header sign atop this existing monument sign. The proposed sign area for this modified sign would be a total of 30.08 square feet. The church is not proposing to modify the existing 8.75-square-feet changeable copy monument sign that is located at the intersection of Glenwood and Midland Avenue at this time. Should the zoning board approve the proposed modified sign, the total sign area for the property would be 34.83 square feet. The petitioner is also seeking two additional variances to continue existing conditions on the property. The first being a variance to continue the non-conforming setback for the existing monument sign, subject to this modification request. The existing monument sign is located seven feet from the property line, and city regulations require a 10-foot setback. And the second variance is to continue allowing more than one ground sign on the property. And under conditions, staff has none listed. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, now is the petitioner present? Wanna come forward, please? I must swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
325 Sand Pebble Lane in Aurora.
And your name?
Karen Dodge.
Thank you.
I am representing Faith Evangelical Lutheran Church at 353 North Midland. We are requesting a variance to modify an existing monument sign to a more modern, visually appealing electronic message center. This updated sign will allow the church to better communicate with the community. The sign will have a dimmer switch to comply with the lighting code. I understand that there was a comment from a neighboring property, and that resident lives actually over 500 feet away from our lot. And there is a building that is between their house and our house, so I don't think our sign is gonna impact them at all due to the large distance. There is also an electronic message center on their side of the street at the Matson Lodge, similar in size. And so I believe that the sign is just so small in square footage, and it shouldn't impact the neighboring properties. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions by the board?
The dimmer switch?
Yep.
When would that on and off, I mean, when would you be using that?
Well, we can set it at one level or at sunset, you know, and, you know, the overnight hours, we can have it at one level.
Is that automatically set, or is it...
It can be automatically set.
So that in hard time, you could dim it in daytime, it would be brighter?
Yeah.
That would be your discretion to how bright you'd wanna be, or how dim you'd want it?
Yeah, they don't want it too bright. Too bright, then it just becomes a nuisance.
And we have a code regulating that in the city what brightness can be, don't we?
We do, yep. It's built into the electronic message center sign code.
And we made sure that that sign complies with that?
The building department does check the specs when they come in for the sign permit.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is anyone opposed? Chair closes the petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the petition, pull the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Sappert?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is petition number 202234. The applicant owner in this petition is Robert and Barbara Quagliano, and the location is 1401 North Center Street. The request is a variation of use to allow continuation of a two-unit residence in an R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation of use to allow continuation of an existing two-unit residence and R3 One- and Two-Family Residential Use in an R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District located at 1401 North Center Street. The variation of use request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the Zoning Board of Appeals. The property has existing yard and lot nonconformities, which include: A front yard setback of 18.9 feet, minimum required in R2 district is 30 feet; Corner side yard setback of 10.8 feet, a minimum required in the R2 district is 20 feet; Lot area of 6,216 square feet, the minimum required in the R2 district is 7,500 square feet; And a lot width of 47.7 feet, and the minimum required in an R2 district is 60 feet. Again, Section 47, 17 dot 22.3, nonconforming structures of the zoning ordinance does allow for pre-existing nonconformities to remain as long as the structures are not enlarged or altered in a way that increases their nonconformity. Under site-specific information, the subject properties locate the northwest corner of Center Street and Russell Street in the Cunningham neighborhood. The property contains a two-story, two-unit residence that was built around 1947. The house has approximately 1,800 square feet of living space in total. There are three paved off-street parking spaces located to the rear of the building, and the property is zoned R2 Single Family Residential. The property and surrounding area were annexed in 1960. The city, or excuse me, the area was zoned R3 One- and Two-Family Residential on the 1965 zoning map. On the 1968 zoning map, the property and surrounding area were zoned R2. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, the neighborhood immediately surrounding the property consists mostly of single-family residences with a few two-unit residences. A commercial business, the Crow's Nest Tavern, is located across the street from the property. The zoning and the land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is zoned R2, and it's a single-family residence. To the south, zoned R2 Single Family Residence. To the east, zoned R2, it's a commercial use, Crow's Nest Tavern. To the west, it's zoned R2, and it's a single-family residence. Under applicable regulations, Section 47.6, Single Family Residential District, applies as well as Section 47 dash 17 point 28, Variation of Use. Under discussion, the property owners purchased the property 32 years ago as a two-unit and have maintained the property that way ever since. They are now trying to sell the property, and during this process discovered that the property's zoning did not match the use. The property and surrounding area were annexed in 1960. On the 1965 zoning map, the area is labeled with R3 zoning. The property and surrounding area were reclassified to R2 zoning with the adoption of the 1968 zoning map. Based on available directories, the property has been a two-unit since at least 1987 and possibly since the late 1950s. The property has been enrolled in the city's rental inspection program since 2008, or excuse me, 2004, and has received four-year certificates during this time. Neighborhood Services does not have any concerns about this property remaining as a two-unit. The property is scheduled to be re-inspected in August. If the variation of use is approved, the property will remain in the rental inspection program. The property has three paved off-street parking spaces, which meets the city's parking requirement for a two-unit residence. There is one unit per floor, each with approximately 900 square feet of living space. Each unit has two bedrooms and one bathroom. The property owners have recently replaced both the siding and roof of the house, and a plan of survey and floor plans are attached to the staff report packet. If the zoning board, under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this variation of use to allow the continuation of a two-unit residence in R3 use in an R2 zoning district, the following conditions would be included. Number one, that off-street parking spaces for a minimum of three vehicles shall remain in the future; Two, that the use of the property shall not be expanded in the future; Three, that the property shall remain and comply with the city's rental inspection program; And four, should the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, the variation of use shall be automatically revoked. And that concludes staff report.
Petitioner here? I swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Your name and address?
Clinton Hancock, 3616 Hennepin Drive, Joliet.
Any comments?
No, I agree with the staff comments and just ask for this variance.
What year did you buy that?
It's for my mother and father. They bought it in 90? 1990.
Why wasn't this brought up at that time? Because this is after the downzoning in 68. It should've been caught down.
Well, these types of petitions, we've seen the last couple of years routinely come to the city. They just haven't, they have, just fell off the craps. We have been inspecting it, though, as a two-unit through our city's rental inspection program for quite some time, since 2004.
Okay. For those of you that aren't aware, that in 68, the city downzoned everything voluntarily. All you had to do was come in and ask for the variation, and there wouldn't have been any action taken at all, it would've been granted. Some people, either because they didn't know it, failed to do so, or just out of lack of concern, didn't do anything. So this would've been done automatically, so it comes across least frequently. Does anyone else on board have any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Just gonna talk, have a second. I swear you in, sir. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do, sir.
Name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, committee members. I'm appearing today as John Sheridan with the Cunningham Neighborhood Council, President of Cunningham Neighborhood Council. And I came in that area in 1968, hung around with a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and I believe that apartment was there in 19, excuse me, 1963, when I moved up here from Maryland. And been around that immediate area most of my time in Joliet. Saw at least an apartment. Never had a problem with that two-unit. So I would ask for continuation so they could sell the property. In regards to your question, Mr. Chairman, that area of Cunningham, you have a lot of homes that fit this scenario. Mine, for example, I bought it around 1975. It was an apartment building, again, when I moved in next door in 1963 with my grandparents. And when I bought it, I didn't know anything about zoning. And so it's an R2, been rented out up until 2011. And there's other properties in my neighborhood, the same situation. Your water bill has taken two charges for your sewer, for your water, and it continues to work until you go to sell the property, and then you find out, like today, you know, that you find out it's an R2 rather than R3. And as people die off and sell the homes, or children get the property, and we've been before this council, before the zoning board before, on the same type of issues, where you've had to get a change to R3 that's been existence that way for a long, long time. It's just an old neighborhood, and things were never updated. And with the computers today, you could probably update and catch some of that stuff just by looking at water bills.
Always nice to have you on our side, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Your memory's good, John, thank you.
We support the decision of the Planning Commission to, or planning people to go ahead and let it go to an R3.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Chair closes petition to the board and asks the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Pull the board.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Sappert?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is petition number 202235. The applicant owner is Ruben Diaz, and the location is 1214 Arthur Avenue. The request is a variation to reduce the front yard setback for the rear yard of a through lot to allow the construction of a detached garage. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation to reduce the required front yard setback for the rear yard of a through lot from 30 feet to 20 feet to allow the construction of a detached garage. The property is a through lot, meaning it has frontage along Dora Avenue at the rear of the property, as well as frontage along the front of the property. Per the zoning ordinance, front yard requirements apply to all street frontages on through lots. The Zoning Board of Appeals does make the final decision on this variation request. Under site-specific information, the property in question is an approximately 14,000-square-foot double lot. The property contains a two-story house built around 1948 and a 20 by 22 detached garage. The property is zoned R2 Single Family Residential. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, the property is located in the Forest Park neighborhood and surrounded by single-family homes with R2 Single Family Residential zoning. All of the lots in this block of Arthur Avenue are through lots, and some have detached garages that are nearer than 30 feet to the property line along Dora Avenue. You can see that on Figure 5 of your staff report packet. Under applicable regulations, Section 47 dash 6.4, R2 Yard and Lot Requirements; Section 47 dash 17.3, Yards Required for Through Lots; And Section 47 dash 19.8, Findings of Facts Supporting a Variation. For discussion, the property owner is seeking to build a larger detached garage on their property, which is a through lot with frontage on both Arthur Avenue and Dora Avenue. The owner currently has a 20 by 22-foot detached garage on their property and proposes to build a new 38-feet-by-31-feet detached garage in approximately the same location. The additional garage space will allow the owner to store their wheelchair-accessible van with ramp in the garage and still have additional storage space for other vehicles and materials. Because the lot is a through lot, the front yard setback of 30 feet applies to the rear yard. The proposed garage would be setback 20 feet off the property line. Therefore, the petitioner is requesting a variation to reduce the required setback from 30 feet to 20 feet to allow the larger garage. The proposed garage cannot be placed farther back off the rear property line because the owner is also planning, in addition, on the back of their existing house in order to add a wheelchair-accessible bedroom on the first floor. The property owner plans to install a new paved driveway off of Dora Avenue and also to continue using the existing driveway off of Arthur Avenue to access the garage. A plan of survey and building plans are attached. In order to meet lot coverage requirements and install the new driveway, planning staff requested that the property owner consolidate the two lots into one lot prior to filing for the variation. The property owner has complied with this request and submitted the consolidation paperwork to Will County. Under conditions, staff is recommending none at this time, and that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present? I swear you in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
Ruben Diaz. I live on 1214 Arthur Avenue, Joliet, Illinois.
Anything you'd like to say, sir?
Yes, I really need that garage. I, right now, it's only a two-car garage. And this one, this newer, newer here will be around four, four-car garage, so I can get my handicap then in there. And I need two spaces, because I had a ramp on the side and the one on the other side for my wife. And then I have a lot of stuff that I used to buy and sell, you know, through years, and it's just my basement, it's just a mess. And I can't build this garage in my second lot because it's too far from my house. So for example, if it's raining, or if it's snowing, you know, I'm gonna get wet, or, you know. So that's why I needed, on the same lot, closer to my house. And then some of my neighbors, I took some pictures yesterday. One of my neighbors on 1210, his garage is 15 feet, 15, 15, away from the street line. My other neighbor on 1216, he's three feet away from the street line. So I'm asking for 20 feet, please, I need that space.
You made a compromise, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Ms. Sappert?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, next petition is number 202236. The applicant in this manner is Kelsey Denka and Michael Kreiter. And they are also the owners of the property. The location is 2513 Red Oak Drive. The request is a variation on maximum fence height to allow a six-foot fence in a corner side yard. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a variation on maximum fence height to allow a six-foot-high fence in a corner side yard located at 2513 Red Oak Drive. The ZBA makes the final decision for this variation request. Under site-specific information, the lot is around 11,385 square feet in size and is located at the southwest corner of Red Oak Drive and Briar Cliff Drive in the Autumn Fields subdivision. The lot contains a two-story, single-family residence that was built around 2004. The existing zoning is R2 Single Family Residential. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, the property is surrounded in all directions by single-family residential homes, all zoned R2 Single Family Residential in the Autumn Fields subdivision. Under applicable regulations, 47 dash 6.4, which is yard and lot requirements in an R2 district; 47 dash 17.3, which is yards required for corner and through lots; 47 dash 17.6, which is the heights of fences; And 47 dash 19.8, Criteria for Granting a Variation. Under discussion, the petitioner would like to replace their existing wood fence with a six-foot-high vinyl fence along their north, west, and east property lines. They plan to tie into the existing white vinyl six-foot-high fence that is along their south property line. Their existing fence was erected in 2005 and is four feet high along their north and west property lines and five feet along the west property line, portions of it. The proposed fence plan can be found as an attachment to the staff report packet. The existing fence does not comply with the city's 25-foot visibility triangle. However, the petitioner is aware that the city will require compliance with their new proposed plan, and this is shown on their plan. The petitioner is requesting a variation to allow a six-foot-high fence in the required side yard of a corner lot. Fences up to six feet in height are allowed in the side and rear yards of residential lots that are not corner lots. Per the zoning ordinance, in a required corner side yard, fences are limited to four feet high unless the property owner submits written evidence credible to staff that none of the adjacent property owners object to such offense. In the matter at hand, the adjacent property owner to the west at 7700 Briar Cliff Drive did not provide his or her consent. The proposed fencing plan has been approved by the Autumn Fields Homeowners Association, the one that was submitted for this request. And under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this variation request, the following conditions would be included. The one condition is that the fencing plan shall conform to the city's 25-foot visibility triangle prior to issuance of a building permit. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present?
Hi, I'm Michael Kreiter.
Okay, hi. I must swear you in, you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Yes.
Name and address.
Kelsey Denka, twenty-five thirteen Red Oak Drive, Plainfield, Illinois, six-oh-five-eight-six.
Michael Kreiter, two-five-one-three Red Oak Drive, Plainfield, Illinois.
Any comments?
Yes, actually, I do have some, because there was some comments that I was aware about. So I wanted to first and foremost say that the reason that we wanted to have this fence is because, as you can see in the pictures, we have absolutely no privacy in our backyard, can see into our house, the kitchen, the family room, the sunroom. And if we want privacy, it would require us to draw the blinds for whatever portion of the day. The stop sign at the end of our street is, actually, I measured it, it's eight feet, nine inches high. So it would be above our privacy fence, and this would give motorists and pedestrians a clear view of the stop sign without our fence hindering the view. Our fence is also going to be angled in on the twenty-five-feet triangle visibility, which is different than what we have now. So I feel like we would have a better visibility angle than what we currently have. Our fence does, obviously, it won't go out into the parkway. It will not obstruct the stop sign, and it still will be above the stops, or underneath the stop signs, so allow view. We do live on a cornered lot, but it still makes it so that you are visi- the stop sign is visible and the crossing is. As a view from our driveway, there is no problems with visibility, and there never has. We consistently check when we're backing out at going at a speed of less than one mile an hour. Cars turning west onto Briar Cliff will still be able to see motorists coming east as there's no stop sign there. So they physically have to pull forward to make the turn to be on the right side of the road. So they would be able to see motorists coming that way. As mentioned, our fence is not in the parkway and will have the angle cutout for increased invisibility. The bus stop is on the corner of the street in the parkway, so our fence would not block that view because the kids stand at the corner where the sidewalk is. So we would just like to ask that we have the same privacy and security that was granted to numerous other corner lots in our neighborhood that currently do have six-foot privacy fences. Anything?
I was gonna say, in addition to what Kelsey's already said, if you were to drive around the neighborhood, I think you did just say that the majority of the corner lots do have six-foot privacy fences, that's the same PVC material, and it would actually match our neighbor's fence. So it would have a nice look, and I don't think would bring down the home value of any of our neighbors or our own home. And, you know, we've been here for about a year, and this is our first kind of mark that we're trying to make the house feel like our own, and we'll respectfully abide by whatever decision the board comes up with today.
You are in a unique position there, and it's a practical, difficult honor. I know we've granted these petitions in the past. Any comments by the board? Any questions?
I, I know we received some public comments. One was in favor and two opposed. How would you respond to your neighbors that are raising safety concerns if the fence was erected at six feet?
I have already made, like, we've already started trimming back the tree so that there is way bigger angle from the tree to the stop sign. I have even done, done the drive myself to see if it is hard to see the stop sign, and it isn't for me. So I see where they are coming from with the concern about children riding by, but the increase, the angle cutout gives us an additional twenty-five feet from our driveway. So I do not think that that would be an issue.
Yeah, I think with the additional cut-in, you know, it's gonna be even safer than our existing fence today, because we really take it slow, you know, backing out as it is today. So we'll continue to be careful as we're coming and going.
Any other questions by the board? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the board.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Yes, we've approved these, probably most of lots that were discussed about before them, where they do appear in the neighborhood, had been before this board. And because of the, most of the times, you'd need to prove hardship to get something like this, but because of the disposition of your corner lot, you apply under a practical difficulty which also is available to you. So I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Next on the agenda is petition number twenty-two-two-thirty-nine. The applicant is Fadi Rehan. The status of the applicant is the contract purchaser, and the owner is Malvern Bank National Association. The location is thirty-three-oh-one Essington Road. The request is a special use permit to allow an automobile dealership in a B-three general business zoning district. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow an automobile dealership in a B-three general business zoning district located at three-three-oh-one Essington Road. The dealership will operate out of an existing commercial facility that currently hosts a Pottery Barn Outlet Store within the Chicagoland Center subdivision. Per the zoning ordinance, Section forty-seven dash thirteen-point-two-A-G, automobile sales may be allowed as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Section forty-seven dash five-point-two. Under site-specific information, the seven-acre subject property was originally annexed into the city and zoned to its current B-three general business designation as part of the WIS subdivision in nineteen eighty-six. The property was replanted in two thousand and two as part of the Chicagoland Center subdivision. This subdivision was intended to create thirteen lots for future commercial development. Within this subdivision, the seven-acre subject property contains an existing commercial building with a large parking lot with two, three-hundred-and-twenty-five parking spaces. The subject property is spread over five parcels. The site is accessible to Essington Road by an internal drive to the parking lot north of the commercial building and by Chicagoland Circle, which runs west and south through the rest of the Chicagoland Center subdivision. There are an additional two access points off Chicagoland Circle. The petitioner has operated another Rehan Motors location in Springfield, Illinois since two thousand and fifteen and wishes to attract customers from the Chicagoland market and from out-of-state with the proposed location in Joliet. The majority of vehicles for sale would be located inside the existing sixty-five-thousand square foot building. The petitioner plans to have between three-hundred and four-hundred late-model pre-owned vehicles with a focus on high-line and exotic cars. The estimated price range of cars would be between thirty thousand and one million. The dealership would operate Monday through Saturday from approximately nine AM until seven PM. The petitioner estimates that the facility would have between ten and fifteen employees during the initial months of operation. There are no planned changes to the exterior layout other than updating existing landscape beds with new flowers, shrubs, and trees. The building's exterior would be repainted and new signage would be installed. New flooring, painting, signage, lighting, furniture, and office space would be placed within the building's interior. The petitioner also intends to add a round reception, welcome desk, waiting area for customers, and a game room. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is zone County I-one, it's light industrial use. To the east is County A-one, agriculture use. To the south is City of Joliet B-three, general business, and a general business use. To the west is zone City of Joliet B-three and is Interstate fifty-five. Under applicable regulations, Section forty-seven dash thirteen-point-two-A-G, special uses, Section forty-seven dash five-point-two-C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit. Under discussion, the approval of the requested special use permit would allow for the development of an automobile dealership in the B-three general business zoning district located at three-three-oh-one Essington Road. Staff finds that the petitioner has established with clear and convincing evidence that the criteria outlined in Section forty-seven oh-five-point-two-C of the city code, which covers the conditions that must be present for a special use permit to be issued, will be met with the proposed use and site plan. The property has had B-three general business zoning in place for over thirty years. During this time, several different commercial entities have used this property. And while there is an existing rural residential use to the immediate east of the property off Essington Road, these two uses have coexisted since the subject property was originally annexed into the city in nineteen eighty-six. The subject property has sufficient access to both Essington Road and Chicagoland Circle. The developer will be responsible for paying any additional water connection fees that may arise due to increased water usage. Under conditions, if the Zoning Board desires to approve the special use permit request to allow the automobile sales business, the following conditions would be included. One, that the business shall be registered with the city clerk's office. Two, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And three, that a city planning division-approved landscaping plan shall be submitted by the petitioner with future building permit plans before installation. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present? You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you. Name and address.
My name's Fadi Rehan. I'm at fifty-four oh-five Reserve Boulevard, Springfield, Illinois, six-two-seven-one-one.
Any comments?
I'm a representative of Rehan Motors in Springfield. We've been really successful there in a small town about three and a half hours away from this area. We think that coming to this Chicagoland area will greatly improve our business, as we already have lots of customers and a huge customer base that comes from the Chicagoland area. We think coming to that area, you know, will definitely improve, while we're at the building, we'll definitely improve it, improve the area, and, you know, continue expanding our territory in this area. That's all.
Okay. On the million-dollar cars, do you have any senior discounts?
Of course.
Okay. Any questions by the board? Any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anybody opposed? Everybody's happy today. Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that request will continue on to the city council for final review. All right. Next on the agenda is petition number twenty-two-two-forty. The applicant is Jake Winder. Status of the applicant is business owner, and the property owner is Arizona Investors. The location is five-sixty-A Joyce Road. The request is a special use permit to allow a B-three general business use, which is a pole vault training facility, in an I-two general industrial zoning district. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow a pole vault training facility, which is a B-three general business use, in an I-two general industrial zoning district. Per the City of Joliet zoning ordinance, B-three uses may be allowed as special uses in the I-two district when authorized by two-thirds majority vote of the city council with the advice of the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with Section forty-seven dash five-point-two-C. Under site-specific information, the site in question is approximately eleven-point-two acres and contains two warehouse buildings and a retention pond. The special use request is for an eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot tenant space in the larger warehouse building, which is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet by six-hundred-and-fifty feet, which is one-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred square feet. This building has five other current tenants, Team Industrial Services, Container Service Group, Bravo Inc., Uno Volleyball Club, and Logo Ploss Joliet, Inc. The smaller warehouse is three-hundred feet by one-hundred feet, or thirty thousand square feet, and is occupied by AmeriPlate Incorporated. Nineteen eighty-six, along with the approval of the preliminary plat for the overall commercial and industrial division, this site was reclassified from B-three general business to I-two general industrial zoning because of a proposal at that time for a soy processing plant, which was never built. The existing warehouses then were built in nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety-eight. In August of two thousand and sixteen, the city council approved a special use permit to allow a volleyball club, Uno Volleyball Club, which is a B-three use, in another tenant space in the larger warehouse. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, the property is located in the Oak Leaf Center subdivision, which contains a mix of light industrial and commercial uses. The cornerstone services administrative offices and services are located across the street on Joyce Road. The zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. North, to the north, is I-one light industrial, and that's a commercial and industrial use. To the south is Interstate eighty, which beyond that is the Village of Rockdale, I-one heavy commercial light industry, and then industrial uses. To the east is I, City of Joliet I-one, and it's commercial industrial uses, and to the west is City of Joliet I-one and I-two, commercial uses. Under applicable regulations, Section forty-seven dash fourteen-point-three-D, which is prohibited uses in all industrial districts, which is under B-three uses, Section forty-seven dash fourteen-point-three-C, prohibited uses all industrial districts conditions, and Section forty-seven dash five-point-two-C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit. Under discussion, the petitioner Jake Winder of Rise Pole Vault Training Center is seeking approval of a special use permit to allow a pole vault training facility, a B-three general business use, and an I-two general industrial district. The training center is currently located in Shorewood, but the location does not have enough room to allow a full approach to the vaulting bar and pit. The petitioner would like to relocate to the space in Joliet because it is large enough to accommodate a full approach as well as other training equipment and thus allow for a higher-quality operation. Rise Pole Vault mainly serves high school and college-level athletes. The center operates in the afternoons and evenings from around three PM to eight-thirty PM and occasionally on weekends. The center generally runs two classes at a time of approximately six to nine people each with one coach per nine athletes. The proposed tenant space has enough parking in front to accommodate the users of the facility, and the site also has additional parking located along the west, north, and east sides of the warehouse building. Employees of Rise may park in the overflow parking to leave the spaces out front available for the athletes. The proposed location for the training facility is within a multi-tenant warehouse that contains both light industrial and commercial uses. In two thousand and sixteen, the city council approved a special use permit to allow Uno Volleyball, a volleyball club, to be located in another tenant space at the site. Per the zoning ordinance, a B-three, B-three uses are allowed as special uses in the I-two zoning district if they are not adversely affected by their location within industrial districts and when the proposed use does not interfere with the orderly and economic development of the remaining portions of the industrial district. Under conditions, if the Zoning Board desires to approve this special use permit to allow a pole vault training facility, which is a B-three general business use, in an I-two general industrial zoning district, the following conditions would be included. Condition one, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And two, that the bill, that the business shall be registered with the city clerk's office. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present? What is the legal process? You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address.
Jake Winder, sixteen-one-five-four South Dan O'Connell Drive, Plainfield, Illinois.
Any comments?
We really appreciate your, the opportunity that you guys would, would look at this and consider this. We've started, started in two thousand and nineteen, training people out of a small strip mall in Shorewood, and then weathered the pandemic, which was really difficult, but now we're flourishing and we're starting to really... flourishing and we're starting to really have, is starting to become a very special place to a lot of pole vaulters in the area. And this is going to allow us to expand our operation. And then, we also, like, had mentioned in the staff report, it's, it's hard to, you can't run a full approach. I know that probably doesn't make any sense to you guys in our current space, and I'm actually getting on a plane right after this to go coach my brother at the world championships in Oregon, and he can't run his full approach, so we need to get a place that he can run his full approach, and then maybe we could attract other people that are at that Olympic level that might want to come and train with us as well.
Any questions by the board? Any questions, any comments? Anybody in the audience in favor? Is there anyone opposed? I'm gonna show my ignorance here. What's Logo Plast?
Lo, Logo Plast?
Yeah, it said here, it says, it's going to be occupied by Uno Volleyball and Logo Plast.
A neighboring business.
I think it's.
Is it?
I don't know.
Mine is switched. The next, like, it goes, it would be Rise Pole Vault, and then Bravo Incorporated, and then Uno Volleyball. I, that's what it says on the sign. I have no idea.
I thought maybe I was outdated or something. Glad nobody else.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Sapper?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right, that request does move on to the city council. Next on the agenda is petition twenty-two-two-fourty-one. The petitioner is Emerald Coast LLC. The property owner is GW-two-two-one-one Jefferson Juliet LLC. The location is twenty-two-eleven West Jefferson Street. The request is a special use permit to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensing organization. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary located twenty-two-eleven West Jefferson Street. This request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Under site-specific information, the property in question is Zone B three General Business District. Baker Square Restaurant built the existing building several decades ago. Baker Square permanently closed their Jefferson Street restaurant in March of twenty-nineteen, and the building has been vacant since that time. The single-story building is approximately four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine square feet in size. The surface lot is currently striped for sixty-four vehicles. However, the applicant intends to modify the parking lot configuration as described later in the staff report. The property has one shared ingress egress onto Jefferson Street, and the petitioner intends to maintain this access point. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is Zone B three General Business, and it's an office building; to the south, Zone B three General Business, it's the Mary Crest Shopping Plaza; to the east, Zone B three General Business, and it's a retail building; to the west, Zone B three General Business, and it'll be a future retail building. Under applicable regulations, forty-seven dash twelve-point-two-A, special uses for the B-two, no, it should be B-three, should be forty-seven dash thirteen-two-A, special uses for the B three General Business District; forty-seven dash fifteen-I, adult-use cannabis; forty-seven dash five-point-two-C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit. Under discussion, Emerald Coast, on behalf of its operations partner, Justice Cannabis Company, seeks approval of a special use permit to allow an adult-use cannabis dispensary at this vacant retail property. The City of Juliet zoning ordinance allows adult-use cannabis dispensaries in the B three General Business District subject to the approval of a special use permit. If this special use permit is approved, the dispensary shall be operated under the name Block, as will all other dispensaries operated by Justice Cannabis Company. Justice Cannabis Company, a national cannabis company founded in Chicago, owns and operates cannabis cultivation centers and dispensaries in several states. Emerald Coast has been selected to receive a conditional adult-use cannabis dispensing organization license by the state of Illinois, and its full license is scheduled to be released within the next sixty to ninety days. As detailed in the attached floor plan, the layout of the proposed dispensary distinguishes amongst the dispensary's public area, limited access areas, and highly restricted areas. The proposed dispensary's public area is limited solely to the waiting area, which is accessed through the main entrance to the building located at its southeast corner. The remaining space consists of showroom, sales floor area, including point-of-sales, cashier's vault, which is a limited access area, and packaging area, and, and security, which are highly restricted areas. Additional details on their operations plan can be found in the attachment to the staff report. State law provides that a dispensary is allowed to be open from six AM to ten PM. According to Emerald Coast, the hours of this dispensary would likely be seven AM to nine PM Monday through Saturday, and eight AM to seven PM on Sundays. The company intends to employ around twenty people with six to twelve employees on-site at any given time. Emerald Coast estimates that they will see approximately seven-hundred-and-fifty customers per week at this location. According to Emerald Coast, many of the customers at other facilities preorder their products, limiting the amount of time they spend in the store. Emerald Coast estimates that the average visit by a customer will be less than ten minutes. The company reports that their clientele typically come throughout the day and do not follow rush hour patterns. At any time, there would be a backup or waiting line. There is an adequate area for line queuing along the east side of the building on the ninety-foot-long sidewalk for customers to wait. If the dispensary becomes crowded or has mass overflow, their plan is to deploy a security officer into the parking lot to help assist customers and keep the site free of traffic issues and safety. The security plan for the proposed dispensary includes two to three armed security guards on-site during business hours. One to two guards will greet purchasers and be stationed strategically to oversee the on-site operations, assist with deliveries, and conduct inside and outside perimeter checks. The remaining security guard will be watching the interior and exterior camera feed. Detailed information on their proposed security plan can be found in the attached operations narrative. The redevelopment of this former restaurant property also includes renovations to the facade to rebrand this building, and changes to the layout to improve functionality. Conceptual building elevations, as well as a conceptual, conceptual floor plan, are included with the staff report packet. The facade will be updated with the introduction of new color, of a new color scheme with iron-colored roof and white walls, as well as the application of wood paneling, removal of the front gable, removal of the glass-roofed addition on the west facade, in addition to metal awnings on the east and south facades. The redevelopment of this former restaurant property also includes new landscaping along the front and sides of the building, as well as a five-foot-wide landscaping along the perimeter of the rear parking area and landscaped parking islands. The parking lot will be reconfigured to accommodate fifty-three parking spaces, which exceeds the city's parking space requirement for a building this size. The city requires one parking space for every one-hundred-and-eighty square feet of gross floor area, which translates to twenty-eight spaces for a four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine square-foot retail building. The site lighting will be updated to city requirements, and a new sixteen-foot-wide sidewalk will be installed to connect the main entrance to the public sidewalk along Jefferson Street. The proposed conceptual site plan and conceptual plan, landscape plan, are attached to the staff report. The City of Juliet's traffic engineer reviewed the submitted traffic impact study and did not see any issues regarding its findings. The traffic impact study can also be found as an attachment. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this special use permit, the following conditions would be included: One, that the special use permit granted shall here, herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained and not later than one-hundred-and-eighty days of the effective day of this ordinance, and the erection or the alteration of a building is stated, or the use of, is commenced within this period, and the rest is the standard special use permit language we always read. Number two is that should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present? All three of you going to speak? Swear you're all in. You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law? Names and addresses. Enter the mic.
Craig Crandall, Attorney, four-oh-seven Congress Parkway, Crystal Lake, Illinois.
Mitchell Zabodak, twenty-eight forty-four Floral Drive, Northbrook.
Jim Meyer, I live at thirty-six Star Court in Winston, Missouri.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you all for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. We worked closely with Jane and staff to present everything that you've seen before you today, also have worked closely, met actually today with Officer Chuck Mascalino out at the site. We know that one of the big issues on the site, one of the concerns is security. Jim Meyer is here with us today. He's from our security team to address any issues that you may have here. Just want to update some of the information that Jane provided. Currently, we have, we have a conditional license. Those licenses had been held up through a process in the courts that has been relieved, and as of tomorrow, the license for this particular site, if granted, will be available, so we'll be getting to it right away. There were one-hundred-and-eighty-five licenses that were, that were held up, and those will be issued immediately. Have with us, Mitch Zabodak is with Justice Cannabis. He'll be the operator, working with Emerald Coast here to answer any questions about operations, as well as Jim on issues of security, so may happen to answer any questions that you may have, but predominantly to them on operations and security.
Do you use your own security, or do you have a security firm, or do you lose local police, or?
Under, under the ordinances, must, it must be a separate entity, so not wholly owned. We know that here locally that the police have been involved. We certainly welcome opportunities with that. We did discuss that with Officer Mascalino as to involvement, and certainly at the initial stage, we'll definitely engage the police in whatever capacity. We appear before a number of different municipalities, and each municipality is different as to what they wish to have, the desire of the police involved. We welcome any involvement that we may get, including, as identified in the staff report, there's a lot of cameras involved here. We will provide a direct feed on that to the police if desired. So generally, it's a separate security force. We will engage either on-duty or off-duty police to the extent allowed.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Any comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Come forward. I swear you're in, sir.
My name is Jack Kromansky, twenty-five thirty-two.
You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law? Go ahead.
I appreciate the gentleman that were up here in their comments, but as you noticed, none of them were from Juliet. I moved to Juliet in nineteen seventy-one. I saw the changes in Juliet from downtown, bustling downtown, to what's commonly known to Jefferson as the Golden Mile. It became the, the property to be on Jo, in Juliet was Jefferson Street. Over the years, it's taken a hit. It's been very diminished. There's a lot of empty buildings, a lot of vacant buildings. Just in the last couple of months, it's starting to make a rejuvenation. Tony's moved into, right there on, on Larkin Avenue in Jefferson. I saw yesterday in the paper that, excuse me, that Dooley wants to make a building next door to that in a green area. Well, what does that green area encompass? Already, we have homeless people in tents sleeping behind Walgreens. We have them on, on Hamas Avenue. Behind the said property that we're talking about, there are people in blankets sleeping behind there. Jefferson has become alcohol, tobacco, and now we're looking at cannabis. We already have two cannabis stores in Juliet, one at the mall and one near the college. Neither are that far from said property. I just wonder what, what direction we want to take Juliet. What, what do we want to be known as? I think there's, there's more positive things that we can do, more constructive buildings to get into that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Care to comment on that, sir?
I, I think the only, the only comment I'd just want to bring, and it's in the materials that we have provided, the gentleman is absolutely correct, the risk and homeless and things going in that area. Generally, our experiences with the level of security that we bring generally helps the security in an area. And in our meeting today with Officer Mascalino, came up with some other ideas and concepts. There's going to be a modification to the building. In the back, there was a little area identified, there's a little cubby there. We're going to be knocking down that while to clean some of that up. Also, we know, you know, as indicated in staff report, there's a new retail building going immediately to the west, we think will be good synergies with that. Work closely with those developers to make sure that this area is cleaned up. The amount of money being put into this building is significant, and as indicated, our client is doing this throughout the, throughout Illinois, taking it very seriously and expect it will be a positive influence, not negative on the area.
Thank you. Any closing comments by the board? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Ms. Sapper?
No.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Well, I'm just thinking about Baker Square. If they would have had some of your ingredients, they might have lasted longer. So, this is a legal occupancy in the state of Illinois. I see no reason to object to it. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, this petition, that petition will move on to city council. Next on the agenda is petition number twenty-two-two-fourty-two. Applicant is Mitch Goltz with GW Properties. Status of the applicant is property owner. The location is two-thousand West Jefferson Street. The request are variations to allow construction of a three-story medical office building. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting two variations to allow the construction of a three-story medical office building located at two-thousand West Jefferson Street. Variation requests include a variance to reduce the required number of off-street parking spaces from six-hundred-and-sixty-seven spaces to four-hundred-and-fifty spaces; a variance to reduce the required number of off-street loading spaces from four spaces to two spaces. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision on this special use permit request. Under site-specific information, the seven-point-nine-five-acre subject lot is Zone B three General Business District. A Ford dealership operated this location for several decades until it moved to Shorewood in the late nineteen nineties. A Chevrolet dealership located across the street has been using a lot to store overflow inventory since this time. The former Ford dealership building was razed in the late two thousands. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is an automobile dealership in a Zone B three General Business; to the south is Wetlands in its Zone B three General Business; to the east is a restaurant and retail store, Zone B three General Business; and to the west are utility lines, Zoned B-one Neighborhood Business and R-two Single-Family Residential. Under applicable regulations, section forty-seven dash seventeen-sixteen Off-Street Loading Regulations, and section forty-seven dash seventeen-seventeen Off-Street Parking Regulations. Under discussion, GW Properties, the property owner, seeks to build a three-story, one-hundred-thousand square-foot medical office building on the seven-point-nine-five-acre lot at two-thousand West Jefferson Street. Dooley Healthcare is the proposed tenant for this medical office building. The proposed site plan includes two entrances onto Jefferson Street. One will be a right-in, right-out, and the other will be full access, as well as the removal of an existing third entrance. The lot will also have access onto an existing rear private road. The rear of the lot will have a naturalized wet-bottom detention basin. The proposed development will comply with the city's The proposed development will comply with the city's non-residential design standards and landscaping screening requirements, including 30-foot wide landscaping along West Jefferson Street. Building elevations are forthcoming, but a conceptual site plan for this development can be found as an attachment to the staff report. GW Properties contends that Joliet's required number of parking spaces and number of loading spaces, which is a ratio based on total floor area, is not needed to effectively serve this proposed medical office building. Joliet requires one parking space for every 150 square feet of total floor area, which translates to 667 spaces for a 100,000-square-foot medical office building. GW Properties requests that the number of off-street parking spaces be reduced from 667 spaces to 450 spaces. Joliet also requires four off-street loading spaces for 100,000-square-foot medical office building. GW Properties further requests that the number of loading spaces be reduced from four spaces to two spaces. The property owner's rationale for their two variance requests is further elaborated in the variance application submittal packet. And under conditions, staff is proposing done. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner present, you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
Mitch Golz, 2211 North Ellison, Chicago, Illinois. Thank you, Jane, for that nice presentation. I'm the owner of GW Properties and the recent owner of the subject property. As very well outlined in the report, we're a development company. We've done a lot of development along Jefferson Road and Joliet. Happy to be here today. We are pleased to bring a proposed 100,000-square-foot building that will be leased to Dooley, who has a strong presence in the Joliet market. The plan that you see before you has been vetted by various departments within Dooley, and this is believed to be more than adequate parking-wise. They have other facilities like this around the Midwest, and what's been shown has been based on what they've needed and what they see needing going forward. So, the two requests, pretty straightforward in nature. This is about a $50 million development, and you can be sure that to put that type of investment in the property, we'd be sure that our tenant is comfortable with the way that it'll operate. So, happy to answer any questions for the board, but this would be a lot of improvements, a lot of new landscaping, clean up the parking lot, and really kind of fill in a big hole on the Jefferson Street stretch right now. So, thank you.
Questions? Of board? Comments? Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Alessio?
Yep, I think that this part of the city definitely needed some development and reinvestment. I'm really happy with what's going on in that area, and I vote aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Allow a trucking facility and warehouse in an I two general industrial district, and that's petition number 202243. And petition 202244 is a variation to locate a trucking facility within 300 feet of a residential district. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow a trucking facility and a warehouse in an I two general industrial zoning district. Per the City of Joliet zoning ordinance, trucking facilities may be allowed as special uses in all industrial districts, but not within 300 feet of a residential zoning district. The applicant is also requesting a variation to allow the trucking facility to be located closer than 300 feet to a residential district. The mayor and city council makes the final decision on the special use request with the advice of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section 47-5.2. The zoning board of appeals does make the final decision on the variation request. Under site-specific information, the subject property is approximately 10.8 acres and is currently the location of Berlinsky Scrap Corporation. The site is irregularly shaped with approximate boundaries of Maple Street and Page Avenue to the west, the Canadian National Railroad tracks, and Stevens Avenue to the east, and Wenberg Street and Cass Street to the south. Portions of Benton Street, Page Avenue, and Wenberg Street within the site area were vacated in 2008. Another portion of Benton Street at the site entrance was vacated in 2018. The property is zoned I two general industrial district. Under surrounding zoning and land use in character, the surrounding area is a mix of industrial and residential uses. The site and adjacent residential area between Maple Street and the railroad were originally zoned I two as sections were annexed into the city in the 1950s and 60s. In 1991, the residential properties with industrial zoning were encouraged but not required to reclassify to residential zoning, which does now create the mix of I two and R two, which is single-family residential zoning, in the neighborhood between Wenberg Street and Cass Street and along Stevens Avenue. To the west of the site, along Maple Street, are a residential neighborhood with a mix of R two and R three, which is one and two family residential zoning, and industrial properties with I one light industrial zoning. The zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows: to the north is I two, which is general industrial, and it's an industrial use to the north; south is I two general industrial and R two single-family residential. And the properties are residential in use. There's also county R five, which is single-family residential zoning, and there is land use is unincorporated residential. To the east is I two general industrial district zoning. So there is railroad right-of-way. It's also I two general industrial and R two single-family residences. To the west is R two single-family residential zoning and R three, one and two family residential zoning, and the land use is residential, as well as to the west there is I one light industrial zoning with the land use being industrial. Under applicable regulations, section 47-14.2A, D, special uses all industrial districts, section 47-5.2C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and section 47-19.8, findings of fact supporting a variation. Under discussion, the petitioner, American Property Investments LLC, is proposing to redevelop the site currently occupied by Berlinsky Scrap Corporation as a truck parking facility with an associated warehouse. According to the applicant, they plan to use the site as parking for semi trucks and trailers, as well as the transient storage of dry goods in the existing warehouse at 220 Maple Street. The company plans to redevelop the site over a period of three years, beginning with the northern part of the property. Trucks would access the property from Maple Street via Cass Street using the existing entrance at the vacated portion of Benton Street. The applicant states that the trucks are involved primarily in over-the-road operations and will be dispatched for days at a time. The applicant estimates that approximately one truck will enter or leave the site per hour, and a total of around 10 trucks may enter and exit the facility in any 24-hour period. Karting, express, and hauling facilities are allowed as special uses in the I two zoning district, but not within 300 feet of a residential zoning district. The subject site is nearer than 300 feet to residential zoning across Maple Street to the west, across Wenberg Street to the south, and at the southeastern corner of the site along Stevens Avenue. Therefore, the petitioner is also requesting a variation to locate the trucking facility closer than 300 feet to a residential district. The petitioner has submitted a preliminary site plan showing the proposed layout of the site. The two existing warehouses at 220 Maple Street and 205 Page Avenue will remain. All other structures will be removed. Stormwater detention will be provided in the northwest corner of the site. The site will be screened along the south and east sides adjacent to residential properties. The petitioner intends to use the existing site entrance off of Maple Street at Benton Street. There will be no access from Page Avenue. As a condition of approval, planning staff is requesting that the applicant vacate the portion of Page Avenue adjacent to Track Three of their property at the south end of the site. You can see figure 13 in your staff report packet for more details. This will allow the developer to install a continuous fence along the south perimeter and will provide room for trailer parking spaces to be located at this end of the site. Planning staff recommended that the petitioner hold a meeting with neighboring residents prior to the zoning board meeting, but the petitioner has not arranged a meeting as of the writing of the staff report. All site and public improvements will be required per the Public Works and Utilities Departments, the subdivision regulations, and the City of Joliet zoning ordinance. Development impact fees will be required. A landscape plan that complies with the zoning ordinance must be submitted with future development plans. A payment in lieu of taxes will be required as part of the terms of the city's ordinance. And the funds collected from this payment in lieu of taxes will be used for adjacent city street maintenance. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit to allow a trucking facility and warehouse in an I two general industrial zoning district and a variation to locate a trucking facility within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, the following conditions would be included: One, that a petition to vacate the portion of Page Avenue adjacent to Track Three, which is north of the east-west alley south of Wenberg Street, shall be applied for within 30 days of the approval of the special use permit; Two, that all public improvements required by the Public Works Department shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy; Three, that the truck and trailer parking area shall be required to make a payment in lieu of taxes as per the terms of the ordinance; Four, that a landscape plan shall be submitted as part of the building permit plan set that meets city ordinance; Five, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit; And six, that the building shall be registered with the city clerk's office. That concludes staff report. I do want to note that this petition request does require two separate votes. The staff would recommend the first one being the variance request, and then that followed by the special use permit when you go to make your motions.
Petitioner present. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Attorney David Swice, address 53 West Jackson, Chicago, Illinois. I'm here on behalf of American Property Investments as a contract purchaser to purchase the old Berlinsky Scrapyard. My client essentially intends on improving this property substantially. I know there is some general concern about trucking facilities in general and the amount of traffic that they may produce. Over-the-road trucking is designed essentially to dispatch trucks for days at a time, so these are the trucks that you see going across the country and then coming back. This facility will not be used for long-term storage or holding of goods. It is essentially a loading and unloading type of transient use in terms of the warehouse use. All that said, the variance component to this application primarily affects the southern end of this property, and that, to be perfectly candid, is not something that would be developed right away, and we do intend on having our neighborhood meeting should this go to the city council for a vote prior to the city council meeting in August.
If you agreed to all these conditions, what about the vacation of that?
Yeah, the client's in agreement to vacate that portion of Page Avenue, the alleyway, so as well as the stormwater detention, that's a proposed location. We have been working with Jane Bernard and Helen Miller, who referred us essentially to talk to Public Works before we finalize any permits or plans regarding the stormwater detention and make sure that it's in the most efficient place relative to the use of the property.
Any other questions by the board? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone opposed? I swear you're in. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Enrique Harrow, 832 Wenberg Street. Okay, I want to know, since I'm on a dead-end street and it's right on the Berlinsky property, I live right next, close to it, and I want to know what's going to happen to my property. Right now, I'm at a dead-end. In other words, for me to come out of my driveway in the wintertime, it's next to impossible if they take over whatever the city had allowed me to back up. You understand me?
Yes.
I'm right next to the building. Okay, this is Wenberg Street.
You're here?
Yeah, I'm right next to the blue building. And if you guys are taking it over, all of a sudden, I ain't got no place to go. You understand?
I understand.
It's a...I need answers.
Sure.
You know, I know you're going to close down Page Street, which is the entrance from Cass Street, right?
Correct.
He's responding, yeah, sure.
I'm happy to respond. So the primary entrance point would be off of Maple Street. Wenberg Street would not be used at all. So I guess to answer the gentleman's question, what he would see is essentially just fencing around that area, but he should have absolutely no issue.
How about this building, it's going to stay?
Yes, the existing warehouse is going to remain.
Okay, because right now we have issues with the trucking that's north of you at the end of the property. Every morning, eight, 10 trucks, that's all it is. There ain't very many, but every day, 4:30 to 6 o'clock in the morning, they drive out. And you know, they're shifting, so you know, I can hear them, and the ones coming off the bridge on Cass Street. You understand, when they slow down, they put the motor brake, and I'm right next there. It used to be a very peaceful area.
Are your plans going to compound his problems?
Well, I would say no, simply because, again, the existing route that they would take would come up Maple Street and then essentially head either towards Route 30 east or west, which are the most, these are the largest thoroughways for them to use. So the activity on this, I would consider the southern end of the property would basically be minimal, be primarily truck parking. The northern end and the eastern end of the property are where your most activity would be. The loading dock would be located north of Wenberg Street. The entrance gate would be located north of Wenberg Street, just south of the proposed stormwater detention site. And again, I'm not sure what facility the gentleman's referring to or what their general business is, but...
I'm right next to the blue building.
Right, but in terms of the activity, it sounds like they have a shift, as he put it, very early in the morning where trucks come in and out.
It's just construction semis, that's all it is.
Yeah, these...
So they go out and do their work, and then they come in at 3:30, 4:00.
Yeah, this would not have that type of use.
Okay, understand now. Another thing is the maintenance. In front of my house, I myself have been doing the yard work. It's got some green, and I've been cutting it. But since the old man died, Mr. Fleishman, Herb, his son is just totally different, so I don't mess with it anymore. I've got weeds everywhere. And you know, it just affects my property value.
And to the gentleman's point, we have a proposed landscape plan, and I think his issue is a very appropriate issue to be addressed at the neighborhood meeting, because if he's looking essentially for an improvement to that general area, more greenery, et cetera, that is not an issue.
Just keeping up with it.
Yeah, the...
At the neighborhood meeting, there's only three of us on that street.
To say this another way, the proposed use is essentially, it's going to be a far better use and a far better experience for the gentleman than a scrapyard, the existing use, uneven streets, unpaved areas. This will all be fully paved. It'll be manicured, and it'll be maintained. And again, I think it's making a valid point that we can address at the neighborhood meeting, but we do intend on landscaping the area. There's a 30-foot berm that's going to run along Maple Street, as well as Stevens Street as well. I don't know where the gentleman's house is specifically to directly affect them.
It's right next to the blue building on Wenberg Street. I'm the last one.
But the...
You know, when Berlinsky was operating, the old man, he bought the property from the city, Wenberg Street and Benton Street. Okay? So I'm the last one, I'm at a dead-end. Now, if I'm going to continue to be at a dead-end, I'll need for sure that I got the space that I got right now, in the wintertime, I can back up and go. Also, the city hasn't been too kindly removing snow from my street or sweeping it.
Okay, could staff meet with the gentleman, make sure that his concerns are met as a condition?
Sorry, your question is, can staff meet with the neighbors?
Make sure that the gentleman's problems won't be compounded.
Yes, we can meet with him.
Well, my questions are...
Okay.
And I'm willing to get to an agreement, but you know, when you have an agreement with a person, and the person dies, what happens?
As I said, make it a condition that his problems are met there.
No, I don't expect to live 100-plus years, but you know, the house is there, it's been there. It's been there as long as the junkyard has been there.
So I have a question. Can we go back to the aerial map, Allison?
Yes.
Thanks. And so this is just to be a question for the applicant.
This aerial or the other one?
The other one, that shows the Cass...
Vacation.
Yes, that one. So I just wanted to just follow, so would the trucks exit off Cass Street and make a right or go north onto Maple Street?
Yeah.
So are those homes, I see like in the map that there are like cars parked in front of the homes, so would the trucks go down that street where the cars are parked in front of the homes to get to Benton Street?
No, so the only point of ingress and egress will be Maple Avenue or Maple Street. So to your point, the parking that would be southernmost on the property in that narrow portion, nothing there would be used as a point of ingress and egress, it'd be fenced off. So to say this a better way, Berlinsky's entrance is right off of Page Avenue, that will no longer be an entrance.
Okay.
The only entrance point will be on the northwest portion of the property where Maple Street is. So trucks would be parked there, but their route would be northbound on the property and then westbound to Maple Street to...
So how would they get there, though?
They've got to go north to Benton Street to come out onto Maple. This is Benton Street. This is Wenberg.
Where they going to come from?
They would come up, they would turn onto Maple from Cass, so I think you're referring to the cars on Maple?
Yes.
Yes, so they would coexist, continue.
And that was my question, so I think you maybe misunderstood me.
Sure.
So coming from Cass, if you're going west on Cass, if you would, and then making a right on Maple to go north, I was asking, would the trucks have to pass these residences that's in the southern portion, you know, where you see the cars on the map? So essentially, the trucks would be using that same part of Maple and going up to Benton to make a right to go east onto Benton?
That is correct.
Okay. And so you have not talked to those neighbors whose homes that those trucks daily will pass yet, correct, on Maple?
That is correct. We intend on having that meeting prior to the city council vote if we make it there.
Do you foresee any safety concerns when there's snow and ice with the trucks having to make that right turn to go north on Maple?
I would say no, simply because of the, essentially, they'd have to make a hard stop, and the weight of the truck is going to press right through any kind of sleet or ice or anything like that, and so the thoroughway would not be used essentially for high-speed travel or anything.
Well, and I guess I'm asking, because as we see on the map, and obviously you can't tell when a car will be parked there from any given point in time. But assuming that cars are parked there as they are today, and it looks like that Maple is a two-way street, do you foresee any issues with trucks being able to navigate that two-way street with also cars parked on the street as well?
I wouldn't. I would have to measure the street to kind of give you the idea of what a turn radius would look like, but I know my client has essentially done that due diligence, and they are perfectly fine with the space that they have there, which is kind of why we focused on Maple Street being the primary point of ingress and egress.
And would those trucks operate seven days a week going past the residences on Maple Street?
They do, but would it be regular traffic seven days a week? So again, over-the-road trucking, they dispatch a truck and it's gone, and it may not come back for three, four, five days a week. When they return, they couldn't return any hours of the day.
Okay.
And so that's, I guess in a sense, because there's 24 hours in the day, dissipates the amount of traffic that there would be because of the nature of the travel. So as the gentleman pointed out, his primary concern being loud trucks in a early block of the day, that is not something that he would experience with this applicant. This applicant would have throughout the day, you know, a truck coming in, a truck coming out.
And I'm sorry for talking over you, so they theoretically can return at 1:00 a.m. in the morning as well?
That is correct.
Okay. No further questions?
I'm done with them.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Speak in the mic. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes. My name is Donna Gonzalez, I'm at 207 Maple Street.
Okay.
And I definitely oppose, that's too many trucks coming in and out on Maple Street. They already have, I don't know how many, coming through there every single day, all hours of the day, all hours of the night. So if they build this, how many more are going to come through? There's already, there's a flea market right there. Behind the flea market, there's already trucks parked back there. I don't know how many trucks are parked back there daily, and they're so close to the house that's down there on that street, what is that, Wenberg, I believe, right behind the flea market. I went around the neighborhood, and I took some pictures. I'm like, okay, this is less than 300 feet. Here's the truck parked back up right to this person's house. And now he wants to build how many parking spots for semis? You know, how many spots is it going to be? How many more trucks are going to come through? What does that do for the foundation, the streets, everything else? I don't, I just don't understand it. I definitely oppose.
Thank you.
I'm right there on Maple Street, you're going to come right off Cass, right on my street, every single day, how many hours out of the day? Can't even hear, my window's open, you hear semis constantly already. Where are they going? They going over there by Berlinsky?
And I think what the net result would be is less trucks going into Berlinsky, because Berlinsky would no longer be there.
How many trucks a day did you estimate that went into Berlinsky's?
Oh, I...
Has there ever been a study done on that?
I would have to ask Mr. Glassman, he's present, he can probably speak on the existing traffic better than I could, and what would disappear essentially after...
I would imagine it would be a lot fewer. Is there any evidence of that? Has there ever been traffic done on how many cars were going in there before? Is this going to be more or less?
This is going, this will be considerably less. We have a lot of car and small truck traffic turning onto Page Avenue now, as well as semi traffic turning onto Page Avenue, so Page Avenue will no longer be used. Also, I think some of that heavy construction trucks that you're talking about that come through in the morning, you said eight to 10 every morning?
Four thirty to six.
No, but the number of trucks?
Well, she's right on Maple, I'm at the other way.
In any case, I'm almost certain that those trucks are coming from a trucking company that is already using our property, and they will be leaving to make room for the, excuse me, for the purchaser. So now we're talking about the same amount of trucks spread over a 24-hour period, if I'm adding it up correctly, instead of just early in the morning at that time. And also, you know, before this north section where the trucking is now, before we took that over, that was CNC trucking, so there's always been a trucking company there. Also, to clarify, your home is right behind the blue buildings, correct?
I'm right next to you guys.
Yeah, right behind the blue building. So there's currently no access off of Page Avenue, it has to be Maple, excuse me, down to Wenberg, and these trucks will be going on Maple. They would not be accessing Wenberg at all, just going further north to Benton and turning in there. So I'm of the belief that the truck traffic will actually go down considerably.
Excuse me, sir. Now, you guys own all the way to the end, north?
From, starting from where?
From...
From Wenberg?
The...
Yes, yes, the 220 warehouse and then the...
Because there's two spots that carry semis, right on Benton and a block north of there.
Well, yeah, just north of Benton, the old CNC, that's us.
It's going to be a change, I can see that it's going to change for the better.
Yes, well, like I said, there's a company renting that property now, and others.
And I don't think there's ever a permit for that either.
So, well, but in any case, they will be leaving, as a matter of fact, they're planning on leaving now, I believe, September 1st. In any case, they found another location, you know, to make room for this.
Okay.
Address in our packet is essentially an average count of trucks over a 24-hour period being 10, never exceeding, you know, more than one an hour, which would be 24 in a day. That said, I'm not sure about the existing activity, but it sounds like it's coming essentially from existing tenants of Mr. Glassman, who will no longer be there. So again, I think to the neighbors' concerns, you're going to have a net less truck activity on this site.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Any other questions by the board? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion on motion.
Motion to approve.
Can we be specific, is this the variance you're making motion on, or the special use permit?
Yeah, this is her petition 202243, special use.
Okay.
So is your motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve petition 2022-43 special use permit. Pull the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Sapper?
No.
Mr. Alessio?
While I definitely am uncomfortable with the proximity to residence, residential areas, if you look at the site, drive by it, you start to wonder what sort of opportunity would be there, other than something that's going to actually put some investment back in the area and make it maybe the best-case scenario for the residents, so I vote aye.
Mr. Hennessey?
Aye.
Thank you. The next petition would be for the variation. Is there a motion on that request, which is petition number 202244?
Motion to be in order for petition 202244, variation.
And again, I'm making motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Sapper?
No.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessey?
Aye.
Okay. The special use permit request will move on to the city council, and the variance request has been decided by this board.
I take the panel for the time today, thank you.
All right, that concludes our new business section of this meeting. Moving on, next is old business or new business, which is not for final action or recommendation. We have none listed. Next is public comments. Do we have anyone in this room wishing to speak regarding non-agenda items? Seeing none, the next motion would be for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Pull the board.
Ms. Sapper?
Aye.
Mr. Alessio?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessey?
Meeting adjourned. Bingo.